To the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 17, 2015. So convene the meeting, call roll please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent this evening and Mayor Holliday.
And excused. And Mayor Holliday is here.
Okay.
So if you all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so ceremonies, proclamations, presentations, we have one presentation from, for the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, Mayor Alice Norris.
Greetings, everybody. Thank you for having me. It's a time for, I think, your annual update on what's going on with the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition. And this year, I can say, a lot's going on. So we are the state's, Oregon City has another first. We are the state's first heritage area, the Willamette Falls State Heritage Area. And we'll have a ceremony during the First City Festival to acknowledge that. So we'll begin doing some branding on that as well. Secondly, you may or may not know that as we apply for the National Heritage Area, which we are still doing, we now are 12 communities. So we go from Lakeview, we go all the way upriver to Mission, Mission Bottom, I was saying it the wrong thing, Mission Mill State Park. And so it's-
That's in Salem?
It's just, yeah, just north of Salem. So it's 53 river miles. So I have spent a lot of time at city councils lately. I've been to Dayton and Newburgh and Butteville doesn't have one, but St. Paul because National Parks Service requires that all of the communities that wish to be included in the boundary pass a resolution of support. So why did we expand the boundary? Just briefly, because National Parks Service wasn't convinced that the story that we were telling was complete and significant enough. I have no idea why, but we now, with adding these other communities, we tell a more complete story. Whereas we had the second batch of missionaries that came, now we can tell the story of Jason Lee and the first missionaries that came. We can also tell the story of the guys that retired from Hudson's Bay Company, moved to French Prairie and married Indian wives, which links us now to the native populations of today. We also, we've always talked about the Ice Age floods that came through and waves and shaped our landscape, but the greatest gift we couldn't talk about, and that is the soil, the rich soils of the Willamette Valley, greatest in the world by many, many sources. And so now we can tell that story of that rich agriculture. So we think we're poised very well, hopefully, on this draft to go for the National Heritage Area. Another development that we have is that both houses of the legislature passed SJR Joint Resolution, Senate Joint Resolution 10, which directs Congress to designate our area as a National Heritage Area, to reopen the locks, because how can you have a heritage area without a resource being opened, and to add resources to the redevelopment at the end of the falls, which is the Legacy Project. So we haven't delivered that to Congress yet, but that will be happening soon, maybe with some Fuffa and fanfare as well.
So was that signed by Governor Brown?
It has been signed.
Okay.
Actually, joint memorial, it's a memorial, and they don't need to be signed, but she's added her support to it.
Okay.
Yes. So the themes that we have are still the same, the beginnings at the end of the Oregon Trail. So we talk about all the firsts that happened in this area. And then, secondly, the birthplace of industry in the American West. So those haven't changed, they're just now full and augmented. And why are, why do you have a resolution on your agenda tonight? And that is because the first one that a commission signed, I believe I may have been mayor at the time, was signed in 2011. And so that's a little out of date. So we hope that tonight that you will approve this. It just asks you to, to support the congressional ask for the Willamette Falls National Heritage Area and put your signatures to it rather than the old ones that are there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of like the new update and we're going full force ahead.
It's exciting times here.
It's exciting. It's, as I say, it's another brick that's adding to the structure that we're building that, you know, every piece, I think, is important.
Yeah, I really think it makes sense to look at it as a whole region. Like, what kind of led up to the decision to do that, to include all the sites up and down the Willamette River?
The National Parks Service sat around, drank lunch with a large number of our board, and we're a 24 board member, and said, "Well, you know, maybe the end of the Oregon Trail isn't your theme." And after the silence, I guess I spoke up first and said, "Well, you know, it's about all those fourth grade textbooks that would have to be reprinted across the United States to talk about the end of the Oregon Trail." And she just said, "Well, I don't think you have enough there there." And so after we got over our peak about it, we kind of went back to the drawing board and I believe that our consultant, Dr. Stephen Beckham, who is a history, retired history professor from Lewis and Clark College, is the one that said, "You know, consider going upriver." And so we added those other little communities and they have had, there has been no resistance to adding them. They see the benefit in working together, they can envision, you know, geocaching all the way down, you know, canoe trips, trips to the wine country, their little, their historic sites, which some of them are very significant that I didn't even know about. So we really learned a lot. The whole process has been a learning curve for us, so.
That's great. It's really connecting the dots.
Perhaps you could explain what additional resources or benefits would accrue to this project by the national designation over and above the state designation?
Okay. The state designation comes with prestige, honor, and glory. The national designation, the National Willamette Falls National Heritage Area, currently comes with an annual stipend for five years, which is supposed to allow the local organization to develop a sustainable management plan. And currently, it's about $150,000 a year. And we believe that we can do a lot with that to help raise all boats. So currently, that is a nice incentive to be able to have, to do projects that are of great significance. Just to reiterate or to repeat something I didn't say, a National Heritage Area is a non-regulatory, locally administered arm of the National Parks Service. So it doesn't affect zoning or anything. So we can do together those things that we wish to do. It's essentially an economic development tool. And, and can be used in a number of ways that we will design together.
Perfect.
Well, I just wanted to extend my thanks, and I assume the thanks of the City Commission for all the hard work that you've put in and pass that on to the rest of your board. We feel like this is an extremely important piece of the puzzle as far as the Willamette Falls Legacy Project is concerned. And I do have one question, though. Let's assume that we get the money to fix the locks. Are they going to stay in the hands of the Corps of Engineers or would they be, would that be transferred to some other entity?
I believe the track that that's on is to be transferred to another entity, but it's, it's a work in progress still.
Okay.
The final resolution is not yet agreed upon.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice.
Okay, so moving on. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Citizen comment.
Oh, we have a citizen comment? I didn't see it on there. Okay. Kim Foster.
Hi, I'm Kim Foster. I live on 138.
You don't have to give your address.
All right.
Just a citizen of Oregon City.
I'm the Oregon City CERT Program Manager, which is the Community Emergency Response Team. And I wanted to be able to speak to you just to let you know that, who I am, and also that I'm very excited about the prospects of what's happening in order to help prepare Oregon City, both for the business side as far as, as well as the community, to be more prepared in case there's any emergency disaster or what have you. There's a lot of things going on in the present time with business resiliency, the Neighborhood Watch groups that are very interested in furthering this. We have monthly meetings, we've got the next one tomorrow evening at 6:30 right here at the fire station. And we have usually a really good speaker and a chance to have the teams and people that are interested come together and talk about it. But there's all kinds of training that's going on. There's going to be a summit at the end of July up in Boring. There's synergy between the various CERT teams, and there's also this Willamette Corridor Association that is going to team with the CERT to help prepare the community for an emergency. So we, in the process of trying to identify the resources and such, and working with folks here at the county, and really why I'm here is to just let you all know about the program and who I am. And we're, we're starting on a, an effort to fill a gap that the city had identified in a sheltering plan. And I understand that we, there might be some future discussion to figure out what the best use of our team and resources would be to help the city fill any gap that is there. So anyway, again, just appreciate the time to be able to speak to you all and let you know about that. And if you have any questions, I'd certainly be glad to field those or a mayor has my card, and I think, John, you still have that, so I'm available for comment, available contact.
Questions, anybody?
Good job.
Okay, thanks for your time, Kim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So now, anybody got issues with the agenda? No?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to public hearings. 13-351, Second Hearing, Ordinance 15-1003, Creating a Downtown Economic Improvement District, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the second hearing for the establishment of the EID. We have, we did receive, or we did send notice to property owners with assessed value 30 days prior to this hearing. So they were, it was the period where they could send in letters of remonstrance. If they choose not to be part of the EID, we have received three letters. There's one in your packet, and I received two others this afternoon, so that should be before you. And I would like to submit those for the record tonight. I'm, right now, since I got the letters late, I'm calculating the percentage. So if you give me just a moment, I'll have that for you.
Okay.
Okay, well, while Mr. Underwood is doing that, I will open the public hearing. Any speakers? Why is that not showing up? There it is. Mr. Stone.
The only one on the list.
You are the only one on the list. But you still get the same amount of time, so.
I guess, I'm just here to answer any questions with respect to our plan with the Economic Improvement District funds. If you do, if the remonstrance percentage is below the 33%, 33 and a third, and if you do choose to pass that this evening, if there are any questions in terms of how we intend to use that, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm told that, that the percentage is 2%, so well under the 33 and a third percent. If there's no other comments, no other questions, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Stone. I would, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I move to support Ordinance 15-1003, Creating a Downtown Economic Improvement District.
And final enactment.
And final enactment.
Ms. Braggar? Second reading?
Second reading. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 15-1003, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, creating the Downtown Economic Improvement District. Thank you, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday.
Aye. Okay. So the second one is 13-34, 15-342, Resolution 15-18, Glaring Oregon City's Election to Receive State Revenues, Mr. Parnell.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday, members of the commission. So as Mayor Holliday mentioned, Resolution 15-18 declares the city's election to receive state revenues. The state allocates a portion of liquor tax collections to the cities and to be used as the city proposes. As a requirement of that allocation, required to hold two public hearings and then declare that we did so and submit that information to the state. The first public hearing was held as part of the Budget Committee process on April 13, where there were no comments, and the budget, which we'll find out soon, was approved and asked to move forward. And then the second public hearing is what we're partaking in now. And so I'd ask the commission to hold that hearing, see if there's any comments, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. I don't see any speakers on my list. Is anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Then I will close the public hearing and entertain a resolution, or a motion, I'm sorry.
Move to approve Resolution Number 15-18.
I second that.
Moved and seconded, we don't need to, there isn't, this isn't a second reading, right? This is just two hearings? All right, then call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
Passes.
So the last public hearing is 15-341, Resolution 15-19, Adopting the Budget Making Appropriations Opposing Taxes and Categorizing Taxes for the 2015-2017 biennium. So is this the last time we're going to hear from you for two years, Wyatt?
You can only hope. Thank you, Mayor Holliday. Your honors and members of the commission, so Resolution 15-19 would adopt the budget that we've been talking about, establish the legal spending limits for departments, and set the property tax rates for both years in the biennium. And the Budget Committee met on April 13 and approved the budget document that was proposed by the city manager without exception. The budget includes the tax rate of 4.4090 per 1,000 of assessed value, following the direction of the commission to hold the tax rate at 65 cents less than the maximum that we could levy, which is a great benefit to property owners in the community. And there is one recommended change in the budget you're being asked to adopt. As part of the budget process, the commission had directed the police department to do a comprehensive traffic safety plan, and that was in response to recommendations by the Transportation Advisory Committee and several neighborhood associations, to talking about our high crash rate statistics and also to get folks to drive a little bit more carefully throughout the neighborhoods. Well, at the time, we hadn't done an analysis on what it would cost to fund an additional position to do that, but I want to compliment Chief Band because he gets right to it when you ask him to do something, and so-
When somebody wants.
And definitely the neighborhood's support. And so the, the budget that we're asking to adopt does include one additional traffic enforcement officer for the police department. And the total budget then would be $165,299,745, and this resolution would make that happen. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have and ask you to hold the public hearing, and please consider that resolution.
So questions from the commission first? Anybody?
No questions.
Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. I don't see any speakers on my list. Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this? Then I'll close the public hearing. The only thing I have to say on this is that, one, I think, you know, Wyatt and his staff do a fantastic job. But more importantly, if you look around the region and find another city that is not taxing either at or very close to its possible maximum rate, you're not going to find very many. So Oregon City has made commitments over the last 15 years, and we continue to live up to those commitments. And I think that's something that's important for us to tell, not only you here in the audience, but everybody out there in TV and cable land as well, that if we come to you for something later on, please look back and see what we've done in the past and made commitments and followed through on those commitments. Because I think this points out the fact that, I mean, there is certainly plenty of things that we could use that 65 cents per thousand to do inside the city, but the City Commission really feels like it's our responsibility to hold that down and bring those things on a project-by-project basis rather than just stuffing a bunch of money in a general fund. Comments, anybody else?
Yeah, perfect.
Call the roll.
Can someone move that?
Oh, sorry. A motion and a second might be handy.
I move to approve Resolution Number 15-19, Adopting the Budget Making Appropriations Opposing Taxes and Categorizing Taxes for the biennium.
I second the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. Now you may call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you very much, your honor.
Uh oh.
Except for you didn't, I must have clicked too soon.
You clicked the button too soon. Can you go back?
I'll fix it, yes.
Okay. So we have general business, but before I do that, I wanted to take the time to welcome the leaders and young men of Boy Scout Troop 190 who are in the audience tonight. I think they're, they're working on, I believe it's a government merit badge or something along those lines. I know I've touched base, and I don't know if any of the rest of you have been contacted, but we're going to help some of these kids make their merit badge. So I'll be attending at some point something, and I think the rest of us should touch base and see if there's other ways that we can help. So thanks for coming.
Good work.
Okay. 15-370, Resolution Number 15-16, Approving a Resolution Calling on the Tri-City Service District in Clackamas County to Change the Governance of the City of the Tri-City Service District. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor and commission. I wanted to just mention that for those that don't know, which wouldn't necessarily be at this, at this counter, that the Tri-City Service District is our wastewater treatment facility. They also have some collection lines within our jurisdiction. And this, this resolution is really about calling for what we think could be better governance. We think something with true representation and accountability would be a better model for Oregon City, Westland, and Gladstone. I think the existing governance model is outdated. It was established in 1980 when they, when they built the wastewater treatment plant. And by the way, for those that don't know, wastewater treatment plant is located on waterfront property on the Clackamas River. It's a generally pretty nice piece of property that that facility sits on. And, you know, because of that, Oregon City should have, as should Gladstone and Westland, have a stronger interest and a little more, a lot more influence in how that treatment plant is operated and managed. So we think that this call for governance, we also, you know, you may know, Mayor, by the way, you're on the front page of the paper today, if you haven't noticed that.
I noticed.
But, you know, that, that article I thought did a fair representation of what our issues are. Our issues are really, we've seen some misguided decisions. The representation on that, on that district is solely Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, none of which live within the district. And so we aren't opposed to regional wastewater treatment. We think that's probably the right thing to do, but we, we do have some frustrations with the governance. And I can tell you, as, as someone who sits through the body that, that we have a little influence on as an advisory committee, that in theory advises the county commissioners, having sat through several years of those committee meetings, I would say our influence has, has been limited by misinformation, maybe not timely information, lack of meeting documentation, just a slew of problems that I would never expect out of a public agency. And, you know, having seen our standards that we meet as a city, it's, it's frustrating as a staff person to try and learn pieces of information about some of the history, sitting through meetings where maybe they're trying to set new policy, and not being able to get good, timely information. And I think that's, that's a travesty for, for the citizens who use that treatment facility. And they make, they make important decisions based on, they make important decisions about debt and rates and capital improvements and expansion. And the odd thing about this district that I think is odd is it's overseen by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, and they oversee many districts under the same umbrella that they call the WES, which is wastewater-
Water Environment Services.
Water Environment Services, thank you. And at times, that's such a confusing model, anyway. I, I've seen instances where even staff aren't really sure which particular district they're working for at any particular time. So we think that this resolution would be a, send a strong message to the Board of County Commissioners and to the community that Oregon City is interested in serving its citizens and providing transparency in how we provide or how the region has provided wastewater treatment. And we think the first step to that is, is changing the governance model to something a little more aligned with what we use at our South Fork Water Board governance model, which provides equal representation upon, equal representation by its member cities. So that's what this resolution is about. And with that, we ask you, ask for your support. And once the resolution is passed, we'll be sure to share that with the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and continue our effort to, to encourage change, change that's right for the community.
Discussion?
Well, I think I am pretty well aware of all of this information here, so I'm pretty comfortable with it as it's written here.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the cities that Tri-City serves, they need to have a voice. I think that's pretty much common sense, so.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
I support it as well.
Okay. So just, for the folks that haven't, you know, heard about this before now, I don't want people to think that this is something that we just came up with overnight. I know ever since I took over as mayor, I've been going to the meetings of the Tri-City Advisory Board, the Regional Wastewater Capacity Advisory Committee, all these different things. And every time we go to one of these things, we get some new bombshell that's dropped on us, like, "Oh, we didn't have records prior to 2010." And I'm thinking, "I've been doing this for 25 years, and, and I've never sat in a meeting, a public meeting where you didn't have minutes and, you know, records of votes and all of those other kinds of things." Turns out later on, they said, "Oh, well, we do have records." But I think the point is, is that up here, we are as transparent as any organization I have ever worked in. If you want to see something, come up here, you can see it. We'll give you copies. If it's something that's too big, we'll even give you a conference room and let you sit down and look at the stuff that you want to look at. So nobody's hiding anything here. And so I think when I go and look at a different organization and it's difficult or impossible to get accurate information, or it takes a long time and, you know, it gets fed to you one or two documents at a time, that that's not the way Oregon City operates. And my responsibility and these guys' responsibility is to look after the ratepayers of Oregon City. And same with Dominic Jacob Ellis in Gladstone and Russ Axelrod in Westland. So as a group, it's our responsibility to look after our ratepayers because guess what? When we raise rates in Oregon City, we're raising them on ourselves as well. So if we raise the tax rate, we're raising it on ourselves. But the five county commissioners, not a single one of them lives inside TCSD. And so they're raising taxes or raising fees on people, but not themselves. And as anybody knows, it's a lot easier to charge somebody else more money as long as you're not having to pay it. So I think this is just one step in a long evolution of things that we need to do to be able to get to the point where Tri-City can be governed by the people that are within the district. So if there's no further comment, I would call for the, oh, probably need a, a motion and a second, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 15-16, Approving a Resolution Calling the Tri-City Service District in Clackamas County to Change the Governance of the Tri-City Service District.
I think that, I think that's, I think you said 13-16? It's 15-16.
Oh, I'm sorry, 15-16.
Thank you.
Screen, Mr. Air. Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday.
Aye. Okay, so, last thing on the regular order of business is fifteen three fifty-eight, request to proceed with relocation of utilities in preparation of the library building project. Ms. Cole.
Good evening, Commission, and Mayor Holliday. Tonight, I just wanted to let you know what we're doing and have you authorize the City Manager to approve us moving forward with this work. The utilities at the site need to be relocated ahead of the work, and doing this now, pre-construction, is a great way to take advantage of the building season and the warm weather, but the contract for that does come in above fifty thousand dollars, and we would, it would take about the next three weeks, and I think you've heard that the slide has to get removed in the process as well as the swing set, and you're invited to the slide goodbye party this Saturday.
I'll be in San Francisco.
Yeah, a better place. So, it's simply a request and proceed with that work and get that out of the way so that the site is prepped in time for the groundbreaking in August.
So, I assume that we're cutting the slide off, and then we're gonna take it somewhere and store it until we've made some decision about what we're gonna do with it, that it's just gonna get tossed in a dumpster?
No, it's not gonna get tossed in the dumpster. It's gonna get placed in storage at Public Works, and we're convening a public art committee, and hopefully, the slide will turn into some public art at some point in time. That's one of the hoped-for things, outcomes.
The other question is, so this is a fifty thou, more than fifty thousand dollar, is this a change order or is this just moving money around inside the budget for the project?
This is just moving money around inside the contract that we already have arranged, but it's outside the guaranteed maximum price, which we will, you know, set soon, which kind of kicks off the whole construction project. That's what the CMG process comes up with.
I heard two different answers there, so you're gonna have to unconfuse me.
So, my construction manager is here. I would like to introduce you to him. This would be a good opportunity for Will Somi to come up.
Okay. Name and city residence for the record, please.
My name's Will Somi. I'm with PNC Construction. Sorry, I wasn't planning on coming up here. The early work amendment, the number is being carried within our GMP budget right now. It'll be outside of that, so it'll come via change order and early work amendment, but be lumped into that overall price at the end of the day. We are carrying it within our estimate right now, but to get approval from a contract standpoint, it would be, you would have your early work amendment for this amount, and then you would have your second change order, that would be the GMP amendment, which...
So, is the price going up or not? That's the, okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
So, the price is being carried in our estimate right now, but it'll have to come out of the GMP and be approved in an early work amendment.
So, it's just an early allocation of funds?
Correct, that's all it is. The budget, we're on track with our target GMP number at this point.
Okay.
It just, it gets us moving. Right now, the existing utilities run right down the middle of the new footprint, and it actually gives us a jumpstart to get this work done and get some of the temp electric and get moving forward, so when we do mobilize after the GMP's approved, we don't have to wait on that, and as we all know, when it's nice and dry out, you wanna really get going on your earthwork portion of work.
Sure. So, as a, having been in the trades for twenty-five years, I probably will be really rough on change orders, so...
Well, that's what we have.
Best to get it done at the beginning.
Yeah, and it's an early work amendment.
Right. No, I get that, but...
So, there'll be construction contingency built in within the estimate, so...
Anybody else?
I'm not sure if I have to kind of abstain a little bit here, 'cause I'm, maybe I'm out of line, but...
Do you have, well, why don't you declare a potential conflict then?
Conflict of interest here, being on the Building Committee with Mo and Will here and stuff, so...
That's not...
Oh, no, that's not a conflict at all.
Just checking here, I thought I'd throw that out.
No, you're, you're the hawk to his mouse. Anybody else?
Excuse me, Will, I... He's got a whole pot of them bag here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And Mayor, just to pre, just sort of preordain this, I'm hoping that if there are change orders on a project, as long as those change orders don't exceed Mo's overall budget, I try to give her enough flexibility to work out things that come up, and so, hopefully, you mean change orders that exceed our budget estimates, because there could be adjustments.
Well, yeah, you know, a change order, for me, a change order is when I offer a general contractor a project or a price of a hundred thousand dollars, you know, knowing sneakily in the back of my mind, they missed something in the contract documents, and so I can come back and ask for twenty thousand dollars later on, and...
So, if I get up on my soapbox here, this is why the CMGC process is really a great process. You have your contingencies built within, 'cause nobody's perfect, the documents might not be perfect, but that's why those funds are allocated within the GMP, because if something is missed or just an error in the documents, those things get picked up, and then if there's funds at the end, you can add owner, add a scope, and it's still not a change order to the project, 'cause it's within that GMP amount, so...
And all I'm saying is, and I understand all that, but government here, especially in the Portland metro area, has a reputation for saying it's gonna cost a million dollars and having it come in at two and a half million dollars, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, that you hear what I'm saying.
Oh, I totally hear what you're saying. I can't speak for those other jurisdictions.
No, I'm asking you to.
I've worked for quite a few, and we, I built the Rockwood Public Safety Facility recently, and we stayed in within that GMP number, and we used all of our contingency dollars, but we stayed within the GMP number.
Are you talking about the Portland Police Training Facility?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
The Rockwood Public Safety Facility.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Then I would entertain a motion to authorize the City Manager to proceed.
We will authorize, this is gonna be fifteen dash three five eight, request to proceed with the relocation of utilities in preparation of the library building project.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mangoldberg. Is there any additional comments, questions? Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mangoldberg.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. So, does anybody have any desire to pull anything off the consent agenda?
No.
Nope.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mangoldberg.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
That passes.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up tonight, kind of dovetailing off your last, one of your last discussion items tonight about the Tri-City Sewer Service District, Mayor Holliday is going to be sending a letter to the River Health Advisory Board, that's CCSD one version of the Tri-City Advisory Committee. They had asked, I think at the urging of Commissioner Savas, to encourage us to have a regional discussion about sewer treatment, and I believe our indication to them and Gladstone's indication was that they thought that our districts should each have their own representation first and try to get some trust restored in the governance model, and then at a later time, talk about a broader potential regional efforts. So, Mayor Holliday's got a letter here that he's gonna be sending out, I believe, tomorrow and be signing it, and I just made copies for each of you so that you could see that. And next, you're all familiar with our Goals Progress Update reports, and that's what I have here. It's time for the six-month one already, so I've got copies of that for you, and you can keep these too. I know Mayor doesn't like to keep a lot of paper, but we do have this available on our website as well, and it's just Goals Progress Update on the Commission's goals that the staff is making.
Katie, can you send that to me in an email? Thank you.
And then next, John Lewis has a quick update on the Public Works operations.
Right, so, aligned with those goals, that's a good segue, because as we discussed in executive session, the city's moved forward with the offer on three oh six South Center Street, which is just above the Operations Center, so we made an offer on that property, and that offer's been accepted. We're moving forward with inspection tomorrow, and we expect to bring that final decision to you at the next City Commission meeting. So, I just really wanted to stress that. We looked at the house, it looked, it's a nice home, and it will help move along future plans for the Operations Center.
So, now that the offer has been made and accepted, can we talk about the number?
Yes, and you will actually have to approve that at your subsequent meeting. The number is less than the appraised value by about fifteen thousand.
So, what is the number?
Four hundred thousand.
Okay.
The offer, or the asking price was four hundred and ten, and the appraised value was four hundred and fifteen.
Wow. Strange in this market that we were able to do that, so congratulations.
Okay, and last but not least, Newell Creek Canyon Metro is hosting another open house from six to eight PM at the Pioneer Community Center on June twenty-third, and that open house will be to help guide the next steps to the development of future public access plans and use, day-use areas, trail networks, and educational experiences in the Newell Creek Canyon area, the metro property there. So, there's a bulletin here, and I'll pass that around for any of you that are interested. And that concludes my report, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, let's see here, continuing our efforts on the Library Building Committee there with Mo, and also went to, dropped in the Watch TAC last night, Traffic Advisor Committee, and that's a great, great group of guys there, stuff, people, so... Coming up, I'm gonna be at the ribbon cutting, there we go, be at the ribbon cutting for the pickleball Saturday, so...
What is pickleball?
Well, it's kind of a, between tennis and, you know...
Pickleball uses a smaller racket. It uses a wiffle ball instead of a tennis ball, and so it is, and it's played on half the size of a standard tennis court.
Yeah, there's the catch, it's half the size.
So, less running.
That's right.
I actually researched pickleball.
Yeah, yeah. Also, we have, as Mo was talking about, Saturday is the, kind of the celebration of the slide at the library, and we'll be attending that also. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Mangoldberg, we, did I tell you about this before?
Yeah.
What we traditionally use this time for? So, go right ahead.
I attended the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association meeting. It was a special meeting about two weeks ago to meet with the community about a proposed hospital expansion, an office building that's consistent with their master plan. The hospital's also asking for an expansion of their boundary. The building was packed, there was lots of questions and lots of opinions, and it will be coming before the Planning Commission as well as the City Commission, so I better leave it at that. And secondly, I was happy to attend First Friday last month, and it was a huge success. The downtown was alive with restaurants and great music, and encourage everybody to go on down this month as well.
Okay, and since our last meeting, I attended, let's see, no, actually, the Regional Waste, or the Regional Water Providers Consortium was canceled. I went to the C4 Retreat this last weekend, met with about thirty or thirty-five other folks from around the county, either from special districts or the other cities, to talk about economic development, transportation, and those sorts of issues. Several discussions about the whole Tri-City thing. We went to a, was invited and went to an open house for the Hope Three Sixty Clinic up on Warner Milne Boulevard, twenty fifteen retreat, so that's about all I've done this week. I did go to Good Morning OC this morning, just happened at Good Morning Oregon City, happened to be in Camby, because it was located at Ultimate Team Spirit. Former Commissioner Mum is the proprietor of that business. I will be attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors starting tomorrow, and we just got word that not only is President Obama speaking on Friday, but former Secretary of State Hillary Clinton is speaking on Saturday, so that'll be interesting for me. And I think that's, I think that's about all I have. Is there any, any other?
You skipped me.
I did? Oh, I'm, I sincerely apologize, Commissioner Polly.
Well, we did have Metro Enhancement Grant Meeting.
Oh, I forgot about Metro Enhancement.
On, I will remind you.
Okay.
Last Thursday, and it was, it was great, because we had enough money to award all of the asks, so that is good. The rate fee per ton was increased, is gonna be increased, and so, that's great. So, hopefully, we'll get more grant requests next year, and hopefully, we'll be able to fund them all. I also took the kids to the Moot Museum of the Oregon Territory Family Fun Days, and they had some fun exhibits and fun things to do outside. They had an old printing press that you could actually make postcards out of, and they also had, not Lincoln Logs, but something where you build a homestead and a cabin and that type of thing. So, that museum is really stepping up with different exhibits, and they're changing it up, and it was nice to see. That's it.
Okay. Well, I guess we don't put future agenda items on this agenda. Is there anything else for the give or the order?
I'm just curious whether any of our scouting folks here had any questions for us. Now, you got to see us in action here, so come on up and, or have anything to say, just you're welcome to, any questions there, so, okay?
Don't say you didn't get to change...